Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the last meeting of 2022. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in the preparation of a council annual meeting notice dated December 30, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, could we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Allen, here. Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Fox?
Here. And now, I guess we’re ready for the pledge of allegiance. If we could please stand.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you’re using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off.
Thank you. And now, we’re on to the approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion for approval of the regular and closed-session meeting minutes of December 6, and the appointments’ closed sessions of December 6 and December 14, and the Capitol Budget for December 14?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council President. Sorry, lots of us. All abstain from the 14.
Okay.
The workshop.
Right.
Same.
Okay.
Same on the 14.
Fourteenth closed session and workshop?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So now, we’re moving on to reports. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. Council President, good evening, everyone. So, two short requests. Please consider donating to help support the Summit Warm Hearts Program. The program provides daytime and overnight shelter, warm meals, access to showers, and other necessities to homeless individuals in Summit. The program does not have funding for the rest of December and January. At my last Mayor’s Forum on Diversity meeting, I created a working group consisting of members from the Summit Police Department, faith communities, Atlantic Health, Bridges, and other community stakeholders that is working to provide short- and long-term support for homeless individuals in Summit. And the Summit Warm Hearts Program plays a vital role in this effort by providing the most basic necessities of shelter and food. Please consider donating to our—help our less fortunate neighbors. Excuse me. The GoFundMe link is available on the City Facebook page and on my Facebook page. These are residents of Summit who are homeless. What we’re trying to do is work with these various organizations—they are meeting weekly—to try to collaborate, fill the gaps, and find long-term housing solutions for these folks. We have caseworkers that are involved, working with them, and they—some of them need some mental health services, some medical services, so it’s a coordinated effort, and I’m very, very glad that they’re all working together. And the other thing is, it’s a sort of a last opportunity to donate to the firehouse. There are pavers that can be purchased to support our firefighters. The amount of money that we’re raising is strictly to augment the living space for the firefighters. They’re there, waiting to jump into service whenever needed, and, as we all know, when there are fires, we’re running away and they’re running in. So if we can do whatever we can—we’re just shy of our goal, so I would encourage you to go to the City of Summit website, www.cityofsummit.org, and you can see the place where you can donate and get a brick paver with your family’s name or whatever you want to write. But any donation, large or small, is welcome. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now, we’re on to the city administrators’ report. Michael Rogers.
Thank you. Council President, good evening, everyone. Please be advised that the following city schedule changes and closures for Christmas and New Year holiday. City offices will be closed on Monday, December 26. The community center will be closed on Friday, December 23, beginning at 4:30 p.m., through Monday, December 26, for Christmas, and on Friday, December 30, beginning at 4:30 p.m., through Sunday, January 1, 2023, for New Year’s. Monday, December 26, is a parking holiday in Summit, with no fees required for on-street parking or parking in municipal lots and garages. More information, please visit cityofsummit.org/parking. Municipal transfer station operations and trash and recycling collections are not affected by the Christmas or New Year holidays and will be operating on regular schedules. More information is available, cityofsummit.org-publicworks. And lastly, with the start of the winter season, just a reminder that individuals living in a multi-unit dwelling who are without heat can contact the Westfield Regional Health Department for assistance. Please call 908-789-4070. And just want to wish everyone a festive holiday season and wonderful 2023. And that’s all I have for this evening. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. And then, I had a couple of items as well. Just a reminder that the City of Summit has installed a special drop-off mailbox for letters to Santa Claus located in Summit’s Promenade Park next to Mondo at 426 Springfield Avenue. Children earn courage to write letters to Santa and drop them off in the Santa mailbox before December 24. Please note that there will be no direct mail response to letters deposited into this mailbox. For written response from Santa, please visit www.northpole.com. If you have found any old or broken string lights while decorating for the holidays, please remember that you can bring them to the collection bin on the upper level of the transfer station instead of throwing them away, and the materials in those lights will be reused. String lights should not be included with household curbside recycling items. And then, finally, I have a message from Councilmember Levine, which I’m just going to read, “To my colleagues and residents of Summit, I’m so disappointed to be absent from this evening’s meeting due to illness. I woke up with laryngitis and went on to feel worse throughout the day. I look forward to being back in the new year.” So with that, we’ll move on now to—we wish Councilmember Levine a speedy recovery, and we’ll move on to the ceremonial awards given by the Historic Preservation Commission and the Chair, Tom Conway.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the City of Summit Historic Preservation Commission began our awards program in 2020 to continue our charge of educating the citizens about our city’s historic buildings, structures, properties, districts, and streetscapes. For the year 2021, we also had to postpone our presentation. As you remember, we were supposed to do this at Taste of Summit, and then also got postponed again, so we’re going to just forge ahead tonight, and this is going to be it. So I’m actually doing a little introduction to put this in context. The annual awards help personalize the Summit preservation efforts and celebrate the manifestation of our public documents from our City of Summit website for the HBC. From macro to micro, we go from the historic preservation map to Summit landmarks list to our historic preservation district descriptions, our historic plaque program—which we’ll be announcing another one tonight—our design preservation guidelines, which is what we look at when we’re reviewing these, our current ordinance, and then plus our future ordinance, which you all will be getting across your desks in a little while. And now, I’ve just screwed this. Pardon me.
Just a little click on the—
I’m trying to.
It should be on the bottom in the—end of the bottom.
There it is. Sorry, it’s down so low. Excuse me. So, we also have—so we have an upcoming ordinance coming as well, and that’s been 25 years in the making. So, I wanted you to know that we started this kind of idea about putting forward an award because— an awards program because all the other kind of historic districts in the region had these, and we thought it was a great idea to start kind of noting the works that are really great. So each year, we have our seven commissioners. They vote, as well as our alternates. We vote on what exemplifies the best in stewardship and maintaining of historic property, updating and restoring a property, adding a new contextual addition to notable property, or constructing a new building or space that is sensitive to its architectural surrounding streetscape and specific character to the 12 districts. So in 2021, awards are presented today and will feature in our City of Summit website until our next year set is awarded. I hope you’ve all looked over the year—past two years at—we’ve had the 2020 up. The actual award certificates are to be sent to each property owner, and we also sent a letter to invite them each to tonight’s meeting. And we have—the owners of 14 Pesek Avenue are here for the plaque program. Has anybody else been able to come for tonight? Yes, you are—
Russ Lauder, town manager, Beacon Hill.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming. So let’s get on to this. So the first award is 25 Pearl Street. This is a 1925 Tudor Revival. It’s in the historic district of Dean Town—that’s on the east side of town. It’s a well-preserved example of Tudor Revival. You’ll see the shingle siding has been very well-maintained. They repainted it. They didn’t change that. It has the original window pattern details, a simple door that is—that’s completely visible from the street. It’s very well-maintained. This house specifically is one of those typical 1920s Tudors that often has aspects that are colonial revival mixed—they got a little loose with some of these design ideas, but what’s great is it has the front-facing gable and the sloping roof. And this is in beautiful condition, and we’re very excited about this one. And you’ll note, we’ll have different scales of projects. This is also in the neighborhood. This is at 63 Ashwood Avenue. This is what’s considered a vernacular Victorian—or some people might call it a folk Victorian. It has the original siding on it, and then the front porch wasn’t closed at a later date, but it was—it was done in a very sensitive way. They’ve done a beautiful job of keeping it. It has all the vintage windows. It has storms outside those windows, but they’re all perfectly intact, so we really like the way this has been kept up, and this gets, once again, a stewardship award. This one, most people will know because you’ve seen it maybe driving along on Springfield Avenue. This is the Kettle Drum House. It’s often—it’s an Italianate, 1860 Italian villa style, or—and the Italianate or villa style often has a tower, like in Italy, and the siding is either this very pronounced siding that looks almost like rustication of stone, or sometimes they’re stuccoed. This is a perfect example of this type of house. It was—the owners did an amazing restoration of this project, and they put in addition off the back—you’ll see to the upper one, to the left, there’s an addition along the side that faces the public right-of-way. This actually exemplifies our new ordinance in that it maintains or kind of reflects the architecture along the public street. And then, in the back, you’ll note, there’s a more modern addition to the right, and that is something that we want to have an opening for preservation in that people can still add modern elements to their house as long as they’re not too publicly displayed, but we want to be able to have—it always reflect its time. So this is—this is an exquisite project, and we’re very excited about that. The architects on this are Rose and Kelly Conway. John Cortez was the project manager on this, my associate partner, and it’s a beautiful project. I also worked on it with the owners. This next one is the Historic Preservation Commission Award for the Rosary Shrine, or as it’s officially called, the Monastery of Her Lady of the Rosary. It’s for cloistered Dominican nuns, and we actually got a lovely card that I just opened. Rosemary had sent to me, and it’s from Sister Mary Martin. She’s the operating manager of it, and so she just said she wasn’t able to come, but she wanted me to mention that Justin McKellic—McKellic? Are you here, too? Hey! Justin is—was the architect, and he did a beautiful job on this. And this is an exquisite building. You should—if you can get to Mass and see it, it has a beautiful public space as well. They do have masses once a week, but they did a great job of articulating and matching the scale and detail of the building, but still making the secondary form offset with the scale of the original building. It has a lot of the same materials. They matched beautifully the brick and stone—stonework and window details. And we like this project, especially any of the ecclesiastical buildings, but all these kind of larger projects that sit on our public corners are great to see those being maintained or added on to or restored. And then, we have the Beacon Hill Club. The Beacon Hill Club, as we may all know, was originally called the Basset House. It’s a stunning stone and stucco with tile roofs structure. It has a lot of variety of different scales and textures. This project is specifically just on the back of the property, but it is very publicly seen as you go down to the—to the pool or the outdoor areas, and it was an extension of the terrace and also the back bar area. And thank you. It was a beautifully done job. John James was the architect on that. That’s correct, right? It was John? Yes. Great. And then, we also have the historic plaque program. We’ve been awarded—for decades—we’ve been awarding these for decades to homeowners and business owners who seek to be noted as historic. This is an application process put forth by those owners to our commission. HBC recently added this new property, which is 14 Pesek Avenue. The owners are here tonight. I forget your names. I’m sorry.
Stephen Barber.
Great. Stephen Barber. Thank you for coming. This is a stunning Dutch colonial style, or what might even be called shingle style. It is colonial revival in that it has materials where the lower portion of that building is actually clapboard, and then we have a shingle upper. It has a beautiful porch that runs across the front that has a series of four Ionic columns, and also—we’ve heard—the interior is also in perfect condition, so we’d like to see that. So we’re hoping they may open their doors to the public. So I’d like to thank you all at City Council for providing time tonight. I know it’s a little awkward. It would have been more fun to have this all over a cocktail and eats, so we’re hoping that in the future, we can do that. And what we’re looking to is to serve the buildings and give them a voice, because the buildings themselves cannot speak, and their preservation and stewardship will continue to inform our future development and context and maintain the City of Summit as a truly special place of rich and diverse character. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all the people who’ve been involved in the work on these homes and other buildings. I know it’s a lot of work, a lot of expense, but, you know, it seems like also a labor of love, so thank you all. Does anyone—Councilmember Hairston?
So, through you, Council President. Mr. Conway, I want to thank you for that presentation. Two of your awardees bring back very fond memories to me. 63 Ashwood Avenue. I remember the Chessicks, Carol and Frank Chessick meticulously cared for this house, and I believe Carol is still there. So, so wonderful to see this highlighted, and you’re explaining it in such a great way. And then, also, the Rosary Shrine. My—I think my great-great-grandfather worked in the coals—
Oh, really?
Yes, into the furnace. And so, to hear this history lifted up really just lifts my heart, so I wanted to thank you for sharing these very specific details. And then, I’m so glad that this is going to be my committee next year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you so much, and we appreciate the time you took to put this together. So with that, we’ll move on to public comments. So you can come on up and state your name and address, and please, if you can limit your time to three minutes, we’d appreciate it.
Daniel Jaxiel, J.A.X.E.L., 28 Morris Avenue.
Good evening.
I was watching the meeting of Maple Street. I didn’t attend it, but I just wanted to add a few comments about its closure. My first thought was that public streets are dedicated and created for multiple legitimate public purposes and shouldn’t be subordinated for private interests, and I thought, what would happen if what you consider a neighborhood, or what you think of as a neighborhood, said the majority here are going to determine what uniform traffic control devices are going to go on our street, what speed limits we’re going to be determined for our streets, whether or not we’re going to close them or not? And the reason I say that is because I think of these state warrants that have been brought up and how important they are to protect the general public. And I don’t know what the state would decide if this council does want to close it, but I will say that at least there is a hope that the state will represent the public interest, and if it decides to close it, that’s fine. But I think it’s important. It’s important that the public be represented. And my second thought is the issue of emergency vehicles. If the emergency vehicles cannot use Maple Street, they also would be going on to streets that are—that they’ve been diverted to, and that non-emergency vehicles have also been diverted to. So they’re going to be impeded. They may not be impeded constantly. It may not be a frequent event, but they are going to be impeded. And I think—I’m not speaking for the public, but I think that this is a little bit more understandable because, A, we had a declaration from the governor; B, there was a tremendous health problem where millions of people were being hospitalized and dying; and number three, because of social contact restrictions, there was perhaps an economic depression. So I think, you know, you weigh in balance the risks versus the rewards, and you could understand where there could be some impeding of emergency vehicles. I just ask, how do you just—how would you justify it now if, in fact, both emergency and non-emergency vehicles are being diverted? And say, the fire truck loses up to a minute to respond to a fire. The ambulance loses up to 40 seconds to respond to somebody with a heart attack. The police vehicle loses 30 seconds to respond to, God forbid, a school emergency. And I think this is a different dynamic. I think that—it’s just not right, and I know that this idea has come up—this idea has come up with, why don’t we charge some of the businesses for using the public streets? And I would just ask the question, how do you—how would you quantify and assess for the sacrifice of emergency—of the impeding of emergency vehicles when a major road artery is being closed and causing that impedement? How would you quantify and assess it? Maybe a better question is, why would you even want to be in that position? I think that Maple Street should be open 12 months a year and close only for emergencies, basically.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, Mr. Von Klempere.
Will Von Klempere, 156 Colonial Road. I’d like to pick up on the recent presentation of affordable housing, for which I thank council. It was really good. Our family came to New Jersey and to Summit in 1975, which was the same year as the Mount Laurel decision. That was really interesting. We saw—we read that the Supreme Court for the state determined that the township of Mount Laurel in Burlington County had constructed sort of an exclusionary economic fence all around itself, and they used zoning requirements that made it really all but impossible for middle- and low-income families to live there. In the 47 years since then, we’ve seen the court formalize state doctrine that municipalities must take measures proactively to include all income levels, and we’ve seen municipalities cooperate, some promptly, some grudgingly. Chatham, we know, has a big project right now. Westfield builds its units. Berkeley Heights, we do. Compliance is the norm. Now, the state’s administrative systems for implementing the doctrine have rated it best a C minus, but the doctrine has never changed. And the name Mount Laurel, it remains till today, the icon for exclusion. I imagine the folks there are much more open-minded today, but labels stick. Our wonderful city includes affordable housing built under the state’s doctrine. For the last seven years, we’ve acknowledged and we’ve worked under a 10-year agreement that we signed in 2015 to build 50 affordable housing units, five per year on average, seems doable, and the agreement protects us from court orders for builder remedies. Under this agreement—this is important to me—under this agreement, the situation is in our hands. To keep things in our hands, I urge council, please, not to consider that maybe the state’s poor and uneven administration, or a belated parsing of the particular language in our 2015 agreement is the basis for our not completing our 10-year agreement, or that maybe we’d even go to court over this. Backing out of the agreement, either formally or through silent noncompliance, after seven years, and actually after 47 years of overall process, would allow things to slip out of our hands. We’d have no control over opportunistic developers filing builder’s remedy suits based on our changed stance. The Fair Housing Authority might feel and might well have justification to assign us more than 50 units to build. We’d have lawsuits, extensive legal bills, and big-time distraction. And Summit maybe replaces Mount Laurel as the state’s poster child for exclusionary housing activity. We’d have no control about how our city is regarded and written about. If we withdrew from our 10-year agreement at this late stage, we couldn’t then ever stop the affair’s legal trajectory. We’d be stuck. stop the affair's legal trajectory. We'd be stuck in a battle. Please, I ask council, please fulfill the final three years of our 2015 contract and keep the matter comfortably in our hands where it is now. I thank council for your time tonight and for your diligence every month as you serve our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Allen.
Hi, good evening. Delia Hemlett. Thank you very much for your comments. I just wanted to make one comment, which is that it seems that the residents are still confused over our affordable housing obligation. And I think that is why it is very important that we tackle this question and make sure all of the residents are very informed. And that's why we have, or at least I have, reached out to Joe Burgess and many of our currently, actually, I think Joe might be up for tonight. I think his contract is up tonight. So, I think he owes us some answers on what exactly our requirements are. We're evaluating his contract tonight. The residents are clearly still confused on what our requirement is. And as elected representatives, that is your job and hopefully future my job to make sure that the residents have answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
I'll be brief. Robert Burns, 128 Maple Street, 36 years resident. So, Maple and Ashland is where we live. And my major concern is for War II, whatever, the access on Maple Street is really critical for that portion of the city. It's pretty obvious. So, I think the leverage off of the other gentleman's comments, which I thought were quite, quite accurate, is that if Summit Avenue traffic is congested or impeded and Maple Street is closed for whatever period of time, is there a major emergency, a black swan event in downtown Summit, is there going to be an assessment by fire or emergency services as to utilization, how they get in and out? I don't know if that's part of a study you have to do for the county or you.
It already has been done, sir.
It has been. All I heard was the SDI study, but I.
No, but when we did it the first time, the police and fire always do consult on those kinds of questions.
Okay. And is that posted anywhere, or is that?
No, it's part of the property use process that goes on in the city. It's, you know, all of the city department heads meet.
Okay, that makes sense. So, really then, this, and I guess the question is, have they signed off on Maple Street having, well, being closed for periods of time? Okay?
Yes, they have.
All right. Okay.
And, and whatever we decide to do in the future, they'll be called upon again to ask, to, to take a look and make sure that whatever solutions we have are acceptable.
And what, what's the documentation on that? Is just that they, is it part of your, your process and?
It's, it's, yes, it's an internal process.
Okay. The other question is, clearly with the COVID, opening up, closing Maple Street on behalf of the restaurants, whatever, was self-evident. It was important. The question I have is, was, is there any, was there any study or utilization or data of when, what days it was used, not used, how many, how many people, et cetera, et cetera, you know, barring, obviously, inclement weather, it'd be zero. So, I guess the question is, are we going to maintain a database of, or data of utilization of Maple Street? Is just pretty much Saturdays, Sundays, or every day, and what percentage of availability is used? I think that's really important. I mean, you should have a baseline. And so, my only, my major concern in summary is, if Summit Avenue is, is congested or a problem and the emergency services needs to get through and Maple Street is closed, you know, I believe that we should have some comfort as to how, how the fire department or whatever are going to get there. Being, living on, on the south side of town, we have immediate access to overlook, immediate access to Summit for state, so, and the fire department. So, I guess we're, we benefit, but I'm more concerned about downtown and the north side having availability of emergency services.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other public comments? Hello, Ms. Thoth.
Hi, Claire Thoth, T.O.T.H., 11 Sunset Drive. I see that later on in the meeting, you're looking at renewing the dynamic ride-share contract. I have a couple of comments, not about the substance of that, but sort of in the penumbra.
Okay.
First, just in talking to neighbors and friends over the past few years, if the contract were to be renewed, it would be an excellent opportunity to boost its availability and make that more publicly known. A lot of people seem not to know that the program exists. I suspect that's some COVID fallout. But certainly, if we're looking to take some of the burden off of downtown parking, publicizing the program more fully would be a step in that direction. And second, whatever council does with the ride-sharing program this evening, I would hope that it would look at it in the broader context, not just in parking, and not just parking downtown, but traffic throughout the entire city, and working towards a comprehensive plan with multiple solutions to ease some of the burdens that we all feel every day in every part of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public?
So, we have a couple, we have one. Yes, council president, we have one. This comment is from Bryn Thompson of Bellevue Ave. And she writes, "As residents of Summit since 2014, we strongly support Maple Street closure during the seasonal months as it has been closed in the past years. Maple Street has become a heartbeat of Summit. It's a place to meet with or run into neighbors and friends, take a yoga class, enjoy love music, have a great meal at a local restaurant, or see local businesses showcased. Even just wandering by, you can get the sense that there is a vitality and joy in Summit. This feeling brings out the best in us and is contagious. We visit Summit downtown more frequently, and when we bring out-of-town friends there, they all remark how they wish their town had such a unique space. We strongly encourage council to preserve the gift we were given during the pandemic, when ingenuity and local leadership, along with the residents, brought this vibrant community space to life. It's delightful to see an ordinary road turn into a multipurpose option for our community."
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, with that, I'm going to close public comment. And we'll move on to, let's see, what's next? We have one ordinance for hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read that ordinance?
Yes. Ordinance number 22-3273, an ordinance amending Chapter IV, General Licensing of the Code of the City of Summit to Add a New Section 4-21 Entitled Parklets.
Okay. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to add a new section 4-21 to the municipal code establishing and regulating parklets. During the pandemic, the city took many steps to help businesses survive. One of those steps was to expand outdoor dining in a major way, using parking spaces as restaurant extensions, also known as parklets. Summit's thriving outdoor dining experience continues to draw people to downtown. This ordinance seeks to define how parklets will fit into that experience as we continue to shift things from pandemic mode to normal. In this ordinance, there are three main changes to parklets. One, there will be a fee for each parking space used for a parklet. Two, parklets will be operational from May 15th to October 15th. And three, only restaurants without room for a sidewalk cafe will be able to have a parklet. So, Union Place will now have sidewalk cafes only, freeing up many parking spaces. Excluding Maple Street, sidewalk cafes made up over 70% of outdoor dining seats this past year. So, outdoor dining will continue to thrive under this balanced approach to parklets. I move to open the hearing of this ordinance.
I second.
Okay. So, are there any comments from members of council to start?
I'll start, Council President.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I'll keep my thoughts brief by simply saying, I think the parklet ordinance, like my colleague said, takes a balanced approach to this issue. Like everything, the broad expansion of the parklet program was a reaction to COVID. As we move forward, we need to decide which of those things should continue on and what, and to what extent. This ordinance does a bunch of things that are important, but I'll pick three. One, it allows for parklets to still exist, but where sidewalk cafes cannot, and corrects for the fact that almost all of the parklets we had were in the most valuable parking spaces. Second, it corrects for lost parking revenue, and to borrow a phrase from former council members, makes the businesses that are using them have some, quote, "skin in the game." And third, it defines the timeframe and the process for approval. So, I support the ordinance, and I'm going to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Miniger. I think you've done a ton of work around this, and I appreciate that you've tried to restrict the amount of parklets. I am a big proponent of eating outdoors. So, and you and I have had extensive conversations about this. So, my, where I'm conflicted is, one, I think you've done a great job that we're not going to have them on Union, that we're charging. So, in terms of charging, it's $2,500 per space?
That's right.
Okay. And it's $2,500 per space between May and October?
That's right.
So, it's 500 a month?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. And is, just to clarify, is it five, do we normally get $500 a month for each space? Maybe this, I don't know if this would be Rita, but.
Could be. Could be a question for Rita, too, but it's, it's roughly the combination of parking revenue plus the, the cost to the city to put up barriers as well, take down barriers when necessary.
Okay.
And also evaluate application process. And yes, that is over the course of a year as well, not just the five months.
Okay. So, the 500 encompasses the rent for the space, putting up the barriers, and the application process, although the application is totally separate, right?
That is totally separate, yes, thank you. It's been a while since I've read that minutia.
And, sorry about that. And I'm thinking through this because I'm, I'm on the fence in saying yes. So, I just really want to make sure that I'm clear, that I'm going to, however I vote tonight is going to be, you know. I'm also in conflict because we're here voting on parking and, you know, potentially putting $120,000 aside for ride share. So, my question is, is how many parklets do we think we would have, and how much parking would that actually eat up during those months?
Sure. So, I mean, it is designed, I mean, it was designed in consultation with the, with the committees that helped us work on this, to reduce the number of parklets. And it's, it was specifically to free up parking spaces. That said, there are probably two likely streets. Rita will have a better knowledge of this, excuse me, Director McCann. But Bank Street and, I believe Springfield are, are likely candidates for, for parklets going forward. I don't know the number of spaces. That's, that's, that's tough to call.
Yeah. I guess, how, do we know how many restaurants we have on Springfield Avenue and Bank Street? I don't know if you would know that.
I could find it.
Through you, Council President.
Yes.
A couple, couple quick, couple quick things. So, first is, we had, this year, I think it was 16 parklets, right? So, there's going to definitely be, at least half of those were on Union Place, so they're gone. That's.
I think it's 16 spaces, which was.
16 spaces.
Which are fewer parklets.
Right, which is fewer parklets, fewer restaurants.
Some of it were two.
But 16 parking spaces were eaten up, right? So, it's going to be at least, at least half of those are not eligible anymore because they were on Union Place. And I think, I mean, I'm just guessing here, but if you did not want a parklet when they were free, I can't imagine you wanting to pay $2,500 or $5,000 for two spaces if, if you weren't going to have it when you were, when it was free. So, I think realistically, what we're talking about here is, this is an ordinance that says, yeah, look, we like parklets. We think that they should exist. But really, we're talking about maybe six spaces at a max, I think, right? Because we've restricted it in such a way that it's maybe these two streets and maybe a couple of restaurants. So, we may wind up with no parklets, right? And I think, and I think that's a reality of what, what, the way this ordinance is written. But I think it's well-balanced. So, that's my.
And, you know, the other thing is, we can always adjust it depending on what happens this year. This isn't written in stone. And if we find that, you know, there are businesses who feel that this is too much money, or we find that there's a reason why we should be charging more, we can adjust it. But this is, I, I also want to point out that there is a distinction. What we're doing with the ride-share program, which we'll talk about later, is not, we're not setting aside $120,000 out of the, out of the general, out of the city's operating budget. It's the, it's the utility, parking utility budget. So, that's a, you know, that's, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about how that works. And that's funded by user fees. So, and it, just because we're, we're budgeting that doesn't mean we'll actually spend that. And we're looking at ways to bring down the cost while still maintaining the ride-share program. And, you know, we'll talk about that more later, but I, I don't really see a linkage here between a few parklets and the ride-share program. The ride-share program isn't, you know, the park, the parklets are in places where it's shorter-term parking. And the ride-share program is really designed to take people, to take cars off of the, the spots where someone would be parking all day. And so, it's a way of, of not having to build more parking lots, more long-term parking spots, basically, at $25,000 a pop. So, you know, this is a, this is a saving. So, with that, you know.
Okay.
Did you have more questions, Councilmember Allen?
Okay. So, what I'll say is this. I think, I like that you want to charge. I like that we're restricting them. I do like outdoor dining. Where I'm struggling is, it will take up parking. I, I feel there is a linkage with ride-share in that it all ties back to the constraints of parking. So, and I realize it probably won't be as much. But for me, I think about, when I drive around town and I couldn't find parking the other day, you know, it, I, it's, I think about the summers. And so, that brings me to my final point, is that would we be willing to potentially shave off a month with the option to potentially extend? So, do it till middle of September and then say, you know what, this is great. We think that it's going well. There's not, there's not a ton of them around town. We'll extend it for a month. Because, I'm just going to say this, one of the points in the resolution that's a slight concern is that we are using our discretion as a city to say that someone might get it or not in the resolution. And so, I just feel like it shouldn't be a discretion, per se. I don't know what that discretion would be. We should be very clear on who gets those parklets, why they wouldn't get a parklet. And I think that doing it till mid-September, for me, is a much better gesture to the community. And I would be willing to visit it again to say if we want to extend it for 30 days.
Can I respond, Council President?
Yes, of course.
So, I think the, the discretion comes into play with, with safety concerns, congestion, and, you know, concerns of loading and unloading stuff. That's where the discretion is. And I think it, it, it's through the Land Use Committee here in, in City Hall.
The Property Use Committee.
Sorry, not Land Use.
That's okay.
But I think also, it's, this is different, this is different than, say, a Maple Street. So, I understand the, the, the timing of this might be, might be, in some people's minds, related to how Maple Street will be timed or would be timed. I don't think September 15th is needed for this because it's not, it's not a road. It's not a, it's not a passing-through road that some people have mentioned, you know, during school, might be problematic for them. It's very different for that reason. And that's why I think the committees were settled on October 15th as the ending date.
And this is, I mean, we can change it, but it's permanent, right? We're, we're basically saying in this resolution that moving forward, this is, this is how parklets will operate. That's our final, unless.
It's an ordinance.
Yeah, it's an ordinance. Right, sorry. That's what I meant, ordinance.
This is an ordinance.
But is it for this year, or is it indefinite?
2023.
Yeah, it's 2023. But even if it wasn't, you can amend an ordinance, Council President.
Right. You can always pass a new ordinance that says something entirely different if you want. So, so it's not permanent in that sense. It'll be this season, and if it doesn't work, we can try again. Are there any comments from members of the public on this topic? Just clarifying.
Parklets?
Yes.
Hi, Rose Marie Zadi, Shumpike Road.
Good evening.
I'm totally against the parklets. It seems like you're only catering to the restaurants, and what about the other businesses in town? I mean, if the restaurants can sidewalk, room on their sidewalks, I'm fine with that. But, you know, that's great. But the other businesses, they need parking for their clients and their customers. And it seems like a common complaint about Summit for many, many years has been the lack of parking. of parking. So now we are, we care about all the Summit's downtown businesses. We're there to support them, too. So you're taking parking spaces away that the jewelry store could use or the hardware store can use, or if you go on Springfield Avenue, it just seems like you're taking away our parking spots. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments from the public? Okay, any other comments from, did we have, we didn't have a letter on this?
No.
No. Okay.
Council President, I just wanted to ask, could a jewelry store come to us and say, "I want that space," and could we legally say no?
Yeah. Council President, through you?
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, I, if it's a wider question of legality, that's not my, but I was just going to say, written into this, it's only for restaurants and.
Food establishments.
Food establishments, thank you so much.
It's on the first page of the ordinance.
Right. You know, honestly.
Who's going to sell jewelry on the street?
Yeah, no one's going to do that. What I'm saying is if another store, okay, let me rephrase my question. If another store came to the city and said, "I want to rent a space," but was not a food establishment, could we say no as a city? Or do we put ourselves legally at risk? That's my question.
No, you can say no.
Okay.
And the ordinance provides for food establishments, but, you know, at the beginning of COVID, when we started this whole process with outdoor dining and we did allow for sidewalk sales and we didn't have any retailers who wanted to do sidewalk sales, for them, it doesn't work. We were told it's because, you know, they would have to have someone inside and someone outside. And most of these stores are small establishments that maybe have one or two people working in a store. And, you know, the security, you wouldn't stick your jewelry outside on the sidewalk and it just wouldn't work. So there was never an interest in that. But I think they're, I think we're defining benefits very, very narrowly because I think outdoor dining comes with benefits other than to just the restaurants. I feel very strongly that, that the outdoor dining in Summit has animated the downtown. It's brought people in. It's brought, you know, we've been told, you know, while we don't have data, we do have anecdotal information from businesses who've said, you know, the outdoor dining has encouraged people to walk past their businesses and have, and they've come, people have come in and said, you know, "I walked past when Maple Street was closed and I saw your, you know, I saw your store and I wanted to come back when your store was open." And some businesses have even chosen to expand their hours to allow people to come in in the evenings. I believe there were some businesses on Maple Street that stayed open Thursday evenings for just that purpose. So I think, you know, I think the idea that this only benefits restaurants isn't entirely accurate. I think it benefits the entire downtown and the fact that SDI has recommended outdoor dining and is supportive of it is because I think a lot of the businesses see the benefits.
Okay. And you mentioned barriers, Council President. I just wanted to make sure from the barriers, are we going to have the orange barriers again?
No.
Or are we doing something?
We're, we'll do something nicer. And that's one of the expenses as well. Councilmember Harrison?
Through you, Council President. I do want to echo, but not for a long time, the misunderstanding that we are reducing parking spaces. This ordinance is enhancing our downtown, which we have a great reputation. So I want to make sure the public who are listening in, and I want to thank Ms. Zadi for coming up and asking that, making that statement, that we do not want to reduce parking in Summit, but we do know that making our downtown a place that is welcoming, and this is something our food establishments are a great draw. And so that is the mission of this. And we have staff who are monitoring all of the stats to make sure that if we're moving in the wrong direction, we can adjust at the proper time.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrison. Are there any other comments from members of council? Okay, so with that, I'm going to close the hearing and we'll move on to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number 22-3273, an ordinance amending Chapter IV General Licensing of the Code of the City of Summit to add a new section, 4-21, entitled Parklets.
Okay, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to add a new section, 4-21, to the municipal code establishing and regulating parklets. Having closed this hearing just moments ago, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
I abstain.
Is that an option? Yes, she can recu, she can abstain.
On the premise of the timing and some questions that I just don't feel like I've fully worked out. Okay.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries and we'll move on to resolutions. Councilmember Vartan, would you like to start with the first finance?
Of course, everybody settle in. Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 10049. This resolution authorizes a transfer of appropriations within the operating budget from accounts with a surplus to those with insufficient funds. The total amount of this transfer is $55,101 and this is a common occurrence and is allowed at the end and beginning of each fiscal year. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, moving on to finance number two.
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 10048. This resolution determines the form and other details of the note relating to the Water Bank Construction Financing Program of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank to be issued in a principal amount of up to $3,790,000. This is, of course, related to the joint meeting flood mitigation project. We previously issued a note in 2020 for our share of Phase 1A, which was $1,790,000. But of course, as we've discussed at almost every council meeting in the last several months, the cost has gone up because of delays and inflation. Essentially, the resolution authorizes the city to temporarily finance its portion of the funds needed through the infrastructure bank by canceling the 2020 note and borrowing the new total, $3,790,000, for both Phase 1A and 1B at the same time now. Two reminders, one, this is absolutely critical infrastructure. Two, 90% of the costs associated with this project will be reimbursed by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council?
I would like to.
Yeah.
Through you, Councilwoman. Sorry. This is a very critical resolution that I'm going to say yes to, but I just want to say in some, I said this to Councilman Vartan, it's doubled in price and I just feel like we want to make sure that there's accountability. I know that you're with the joint meeting and often share the frustration of their increases. So I just want to say, as a protest, I will still vote yes, but I wish it wasn't doubling in price.
Yeah, it's, you know, it was, this was, the planning for this was in 2017, 2018. It was delayed by, you know, by COVID, by very, 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 very long delays on the state level. And, you know, with supply chain and all of that, it's unfortunate. And they, you know, they have agreed to go through and do some value engineering to make sure that we don't have these kinds of issues in the future on subsequent phases. But the good news is that it is 90% reimbursed by FEMA even at the double, even at the doubled price. So it's just, we borrow it and as soon as the work is done, we do get reimbursed. So that's the good news.
That's good.
And it's not optional, really. Flooding of a sewage treatment plant is a, is a pretty bad thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and we're on to finance number three.
Thank you, Council President. I'm disappointed you didn't take the opportunity to make a sewage pun.
I decided to refrain.
You know. The kind of situation that you might encounter.
Not pretty. It's not an image I want people going to the holidays with.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. This is.
That was my holiday gift to all of the members of the public.
Fair enough. This is Number 10023. This resolution authorizes a professional service agreement for 2023 Tax Appeal Council with the law firm of DeFrancesco, Bateman, Kunsman, Davis, Lier and Flauem in the amount not to exceed $135,000. In partnership with our tax assessor, this firm has provided strong representation in the city's defense against tax appeals for several years. We're confident they will continue to do so and there is no increase in the hourly rate over last year. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and we're on to finance number four.
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 10046. This resolution authorizes a professional service agreement for 2023 Risk Management Consultant Services with AccurSure LLC and the amount of the contract is equal to 6% of what the city pays to the Joint Insurance Fund. AccurSure has been Summit's Risk Management Consultant since 2018 and according to city staff, has provided exceptional service. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so finance number five.
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 10047. This resolution authorizes a shared service agreement with the Borough of Madison for information technology support services in the amount not to exceed $101,796. This is another excellent example of municipal shared services that allow two communities to provide high-quality services and save taxpayer dollars. The hourly rate for all categories of work have increased by 2% this year. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council?
Yes, Council.
Yes.
President, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank our IT consultant, Ajay, who just does an outstanding job of supporting us in all of our technology needs and just wanted to give him a shout out.
Okay. I think, well, a well-deserved shout out. Did you have something, Councilmember Miniger?
I do, through you, Council President.
Yes.
So I just wanted to point out two very specific ways that Ajay has assisted us, just to give an idea to the people here. There was a problem with the feed of this, the broadcast feed to this, of this council meeting several months ago. We received complaints. We immediately contacted him and the next day, there were software updates on the hardware that was problematic. He also has consulted us in the use of SharePoint, possibly, in the year coming forward, in 2023, for our committees to use. So it's not just, it's not just help desk. It is, it goes beyond that. So I think it's a, it's a very valuable collaboration with Madison that we have.
Thank you. Another thing I'd like to point out is that this is, this gives us more coverage than just hiring an IT consultant because it's not just Ajay, but there are other people. So if he's on vacation or he's sick or it's the evening and we have a council meeting, we have a problem, there's someone always on call. So that's, that's really an important thing because we're really just not big enough to have more than one IT person in this, in this city. We're not a big enough operation. And so this is, this is a really good example of a shared service that really works and is a very effective way of us getting the services we need. So are there any other comments from members of council? Comments from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll move on to finance number six.
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 10042. This resolution authorizes an accrued time payout for a police department employee. Per our discussion in closed session, I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and the very last finance resolution.
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 10069. This resolution authorizes the declaration of a vacancy for the deputy tax collector. We have a vacancy as the result of a resignation. It is an important position that backs up our tax collector, tax, yes, tax collector, is important for long-term succession planning. And per our discussion in closed session, I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're now on to capital projects and community services. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. The first item is ID Number 10030 to authorize 2023 Consultant Planning Services Burgess Associates not to exceed $65,000. Burgess Associates has worked with the city for the last 10 years and the position has been staffed by Tom Barons for the past five years. Burgess Associates has deep knowledge of the city and its inner workings and staff. Burgess Associates will also continue to provide planning services to the zoning and planning boards. The city is satisfied with their service and I ask that we approve this resolution.
And I second it. So are there any questions or comments from members of council? I did have one question. We, Burgess is retained by the planning board and the zoning board, but this contract is not for that. Those are, those contracts are separate, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions from council? What about from the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're on to resolution number two.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to bundle the next four resolutions with your permission.
Absolutely.
So Number Two is ID Number 10033 to authorize 2023 Consultant Engineering Services with Boswell Engineering not to exceed $200,000. Number Three is ID Number 10035 to authorize 2023 Consultant Engineering Services with Collier's Engineering not to exceed $100,000. Number Four is ID Number 10032 to authorize 2023 Consultant Engineering Services with Dynamic Traffic LLC not to exceed $100,000. And ID Number 10036, authorized professional services agreement in excess of $17,500. 2023 Consultant Engineering Services, Suburban Consulting Engineers Incorporated not to exceed $200,000. Since different firms have a variety of strengths in particular areas of municipal engineering, the Department of Community Services is recommending that the city enter into a contract with these engineering firms for on-call engineering services. These four firms will provide engineering consulting services in their areas of expertise as needed on capital projects. These contracts are to authorize fees up to a certain dollar amount, but the city won't necessarily spend all of this money. All fees will be paid out of capital budget funds directly linked with capital projects. And I move these four resolutions.
And I second them. Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. Through you, Council President. I was just wondering if Director Schreger could answer if we met, he's expecting the question. I know the answer, but I'll let you speak it or answer it publicly. you speak it or answer it publicly. Did we spend all of the amount in those for each consultant this year?
Sure. Through you, Council President.
Yes.
Last year, we did have four firms selected, and for them, only Boswell did we get towards the threshold. And we actually adjusted their contract up, but we only went a little bit over with them. The others were about 50, 75%.
Okay. And just a second question, that'll be done. What's the process of approving it? So here we are, giving this money for the year to potentially spend. What's the process in spending that? Like, what's the check and balance?
So the first thing that happens is internally, we decide what work we could do in-house, and we kind of do a cost-benefit analysis. We have a very gifted engineering staff, but you know, we're not as efficient on some things like structural design, some elements of traffic engineering. Construction inspection is more or less just, do we have staff at the time? So that's the first evaluation that happens, and if needed, then we would hit the pool of consultants we have. And then there's internal processes through finance that include the QPA, CFO, me as director, to award a contract under this contract. So really, it's just cutting a purchase order under this contract here.
But it also is part of any capital project that we approve as well, correct?
Correct. That's where the funding would come in.
So there's another bite at the apple that we get when we approve a project.
When you approve the actual project, yes.
Yes, okay.
And typically, so a firm that we had last year, which we actually, they will be on a January meeting, Stonefield, they were primarily survey work, professional surveying services. We don't have a capability in-house. We don't have a licensed surveyor. So that is something that almost automatically would put into our reliable surveyor.
And actually, just one last question, Council President. And it's best practice for city municipalities to do this, to identify contractors that do this type of work that would be outside the scope of what, you know, City Hall can do themselves? This is common practice?
Yes. It's incredibly efficient for both the city and the engineering division, because some of the talents like surveying, which we can't do, but some like structural design would just be cheaper than paying our staff to do it. And it also just, it makes the process go much, much quicker without having to get quotes for every single engineering thing we would do.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from members of council? Questions from members of the public? All right. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and then we're on to capital projects number six.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9919 to authorize 2023 city forester services not to exceed $65,000. John Lenson has been the city forester for a number of years through his company called Shade Tree LLC. Mr. Lenson has done a very good job for the city, and this resolution will retain his services for 2023. The scope of his work includes the completion of the city's annual hazardous tree survey, procuring and locating city trees, attendance at Shade Tree Committee meetings, review of construction plans, grant applications, and other forestry-related tasks. I move this resolution.
And I second it. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to capital projects number six. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Number seven.
Oh, seven, sorry.
Number seven, yes. It's ID number 10037 to authorize execution of agreement with Union County, installation of rectangular rapid-flashing beacons at various locations. Over a year ago, the city requested an agreement with Union County to install rapid-flashing beacons at various locations along county roads within the city to improve pedestrian safety. The county has recently provided the agreement, and this resolution executes the agreement so that these beacons can be installed at the appropriate, at the approved locations, which are the intersection of Baltis Roll Road and Ashwood Avenue, the intersection of Orchard Street and Bryant Parkway, the intersection of Broad Street and Orchard Street, the intersection of Springfield Avenue and Pine Grove Avenue, the intersection of Morris Avenue and Morris Court, the intersection of Summit Avenue and Euclid Avenue, and on Mountain Avenue where it intersects with Larned Road, Druid Hill Road, and Magnolia Place. The city will own and bear all costs related to these flashing beacons. Summit has a number of flashing beacons already. When you leave Summit and walk in other communities, you won't find many flashing beacons. This council has made pedestrian safety a priority, and this is just the latest example. I move this resolution.
And I second it. Are there any comments from members of council?
Through you, Councilmember Miniger.
Sure.
So thinking back through comments that I heard from clear back in January, there have been, some of these intersections were mentioned in particular for this exact reason. So this is a big deal. I'm very much in support of this, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we did have people here talking about Morris Court and Morris Avenue. I remember that discussion well. So it's, you know, it's a slow process when dealing with the county and, you know, but it's, this is very important. And I do have a comment from Councilmember Levine, who asked me to read this for her, which is intersection safety is top of mind in both the capital projects committee and the safety committee. We are always thinking of ways to make intersections safer, and these engineering interventions are a very good idea. They are very much appreciated by residents. We need to accompany these installations with enhanced education for pedestrians and drivers alike, as well as periodic enforcement. All of this is something that is top of mind.
Yeah, I would just like to add, because I use one of these to come here on council meeting nights and to walk to town, and it's dark right now. And so you hit the beacon, and it's flashing. You still have to make sure cars stop, because you will be right to be in that intersection, but you will be dead. So you have to just be very mindful. Cars go through anyway, so I'd rather be alive than right.
Dead? I just want to say, I rarely make personal comments, but my husband takes the bus from in and out of New York City five days a week. He gets off at Springfield and Pine Grove, westbound. The bus is heading westbound. It's dark. He rarely do cars stop. He has to stand there, and it's in the dark until people finally stop. So I can't wait to go home tonight and tell him about this.
Okay, so with that, any other?
Sorry, Council President. One more question. Actually, for Aaron. Are these beacons the kind that are powered by batteries? Can you schedule these, or are they wired in?
Through you, Council President. These are all, they're solar-powered. So it's, want to keep some cheaper, but it's easier installation, so we don't have to run power to them. And they generally work very well. You could have some issues in the wintertime, so at times you will see one has a panel that's separate from where the system is just to get better sunlight, so.
Okay. And can you, are these the kind that would be scheduled to start flashing at a certain time, like if there's a school nearby?
Well, they actually could be. We've gotten away from those. These are the pedestrian-activated ones, because the ones that were on a schedule, sometimes it's like white noise, where people just see it flashing, and they're like, okay, but it doesn't tell them there's someone there specifically. So it doesn't specify, actually, it does in the agreement. So the ones we would want is the ones that push-button pedestrian-activated.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Council President?
You can go first.
You're sure?
Go ahead.
Actually, while Director Schreger is here, through you, Council President.
Yes.
One thing I noticed about, and you prompted me, Councilmember O'Sullivan, is when the beacon gets pushed, there's not always lighting around. So have we thought about, do you go around and look at all the lighting in the areas that we're installing the beacon lights to make sure that it's well lit? Because even like Springfield Avenue and Pine Grove, I don't know if there's a light there, but it can get pretty dark. And to that point, if someone's crossing, you're not going to see the person anyway. So would we evaluate lighting as part of this process?
We can, and we have for some of the intersections. They don't need, we could do the lighting without the beacon, and we could do the beacon without the lighting. But when intersections are identified as dark, we do work with police who go out at night and give us a report. A lot of times, it's just a streetlight that's out that hasn't been reported. But we do also look to add lighting where we can. A lot of times, with the lighting that we have, it requires a telephone pole. So if there's just not one there, unfortunately, the beacon is the best thing we can do, so at least it brings some illumination to the crosswalk in the form of the beacon. But we do look at that, yes.
And there was one, I think somebody had brought up it flashing in their home on one of the crosswalks. So is it likely that any, I was thinking of all the intersections you were mentioning. Are we at risk of any of these flashing in someone's home at night?
No, some are closer to residents than others, but with the modern LED technology, there's not a lot of spillage. But the one that the resident invoiced concern about, before we proceed there, we would meet with that resident. And that is at the Mountain Avenue one.
Thank you. That's a concern that was raised about a beacon that's not yet. It's one of the ones we just approved. So it's not an actual problem. It's a, it's a concern. Yes, okay. Councilmember Vartan.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Aaron, do you have a prioritization of where installation will go first?
We do. We have an active list that's been circulated through police, through engineering and the safety committee. So right now, the Orchard Street and Bryant Parkway would be one of the first ones done, as well as Baltis Roll and Ashwood, which has been waiting the longest. So like everything else, I hate to say it, but there is a lead time on the order. Those, we did kind of get ahead of it, because we had some funding for pedestrian safety in advance of this, knowing, you know, assuming this would go through. And once those arrive, we'll assess and reprioritize through the safety committee and proceed chipping away at the list.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, members of council? Comments from members of the public on this item?
I just want to comment. Delia Hamlet, through you, Council President. The one question that I had is to Councilman Vartan's question around prioritization. I would hope that we're putting Mr. Schreger the prioritization around the schoolchildren. For instance, on Summit Avenue and Euclid, disaster waiting to happen. That's one that we could certainly put on a timer. I would argue that that could, I'm not sure about the schoolchildren and those other two areas, but I would hope that we would take a look at the one near the schoolchildren. The only one I can think of off the top of my head is the one I see every day, which is Summit and Euclid. But if there are schoolchildren, I would hope that we'd make that a priority over a longer wait time, just my opinion, but if we could take that into consideration.
When we, when the safety committee reconvenes next year, we'll bring this list back with the, and reprioritize.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, so if there are no other comments on this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're now on to capital projects number eight.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 10040 to accept a donation to the city's Tiny Forest Project from the Head Family Charitable Foundation for $6,000. The Head Family Foundation is donating $6,000 to the Summit Environmental Commission specifically for the Tiny Forest Project. The purpose of the donation is for the signage, design, and printing for the Tiny Forest. In 2021, the Summit Environmental Commission, under Donna Patel's leadership, decided to plant the Tiny Forest using the Miyawaki method created in Japan. The Tiny Forest, which is located behind the community center, is a multi-layered 11,000-square-foot forest of native plants that is designed to become self-sustaining after two to three years, and to become a fully-developed forest in 20 to 30 years. It will be the first such forest in the state of New Jersey. The city is grateful for this donation from the Head Family Foundation, and I enthusiastically move this resolution.
And I second it. And just to also add, this was a grant from New Jersey American Water that got us started on this project. So, but there's been a lot of work from a lot of people to get, to make this happen. And if folks haven't seen it, I would recommend that they go down and take a look. It's behind the community center, and it's really, it's pretty amazing what's been done there. So are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're on to capital projects number nine.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9996 to authorize a grant application submission fiscal year 2023 local transportation projects fund grant program and execute grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation, Canoe Brook Parkway Improvements Project. The engineering division is in the process of submitting an application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the fiscal year 2023 local transportation project fund grant. This program is separate from the local aid program that the city typically applies for, but similar in terms of process and eligibility. The deadline for the application is June 30, 2023, but they will be received and awarded on a rolling basis. For this opportunity, the department is recommending that the Canoe Brook Parkway Safety Improvement Project be submitted, as it was last paved in 2005. I move this resolution.
And I second it. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we're on to capital projects number 10.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9960 to declare a vacancy in the Department of Community Services Division of Public Works Sanitation Unit. As discussed in the closed session, we are declaring a vacancy in the sanitation unit due to a lateral move by a driver from the sanitation unit to the roads unit. I move this resolution.
And I second it. Any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're now on to the last capital projects resolution, number 11.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 10068 to declare a vacancy in the Department of Community Services Division of Public Works Fleet Maintenance Unit. As discussed in the closed session, we are declaring a vacancy in the fleet maintenance unit due to the retirement of Ray Cooper. Mr. Cooper has been with the city for 38 years, and we wish him well in retirement. And I move this resolution.
And I second it. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're now on to community programs and parking services. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10066, and this resolution approves a one-year contract extension of the Dynamic Ride Share Program from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023, with a total amount not to exceed $120,000. I want to make sure that everyone fully understands this resolution, so I want to take some time and go over a few things in detail. First, what the ride share program is. Second, the reason, and reasons it exists. And finally, why it's so important that we renew this program. First, what is Summit's Dynamic Ride Share Program? The Parking Services Utility offers discounted Lyft and Uber rides that start in Summit and end at the Summit train station, or start at Summit train station and end in Summit. The program is only offered to Summit residents, and specifically those who purchase either a resident commuter parking permit or a downtown employee parking permit. In other words, Summit residents who would otherwise need to park their car somewhere. Second, why does this program exist? Simply to reduce the number of cars that need to park somewhere. If we can do something, if we can do that successfully, we don't have to build more parking in the future. In 2019, garages and lots were very full. Most resident commuters and employee parking spaces and areas were between 91% and 99% full for nearly the entire year, dipping only slightly during spring break, summer, and the holiday season. That year, the use of the ride share program spiked out of demand for an alternative to parking. 2019 showed us that the importance of this ride share program increases as the number of open spots decreases. Now, 2022, the number of open spots is decreasing again. So finally, this is why it's important that we renew this program. Please prepare yourselves for some data. A lot of it. On an average day in January this year, Broad Street Garage was 40% full. In February, it was 59% full, then 61%, then 72%, then 77%. By October, it was 87, okay? 40 to 87. Elm Street started the year at 40%, and then 63%, then 67, then 75, then 81. In October, it was at 90%. Elm Lot started at 30%, then 58%, then 65, 74, 76, and in October, it was 95% full. You see this trend. You can see where I'm going with this. It's a very clear upward trend. They become even more clear when you look at the middle of the week. Tuesdays through Thursdays in these same areas are consistently near or at full capacity. So I want to encourage people to not ignore these trends. This data is as close as we can get to seeing the future, and it sure looks like we're steadily heading back to that full capacity in 2019. The ride share program is a highly flexible tool that reduces the number of parked cars, and I strongly support the renewal of this program. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second that.
Okay, are there any comments from members of council?
Yes.
Councilmember.
Through you, Council President. Councilman Miniger, I want to thank you for the level of detail you went through to make sure that this is a program that is good for this city. In terms of, you have exploited my economic indicator from all the years that I commuted into New York. I could tell how we were doing with what, how the parking lots were filled. So it's a good sign that we're coming back. And, but I do recognize the frustration of driving around, having to look for a parking space. And as someone who has become quite accustomed to using Uber and Lyft, it is a great option for residents, and especially if you are heading into the city, this is a great feature to now have available to you. And so I want to encourage, as Ms. Toth said, get this advertised. This is a way to make revenue for the city and make availability to residents, how to get to that train and use, get cars off the street. Thank you for this.
Are there any other comments, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. So I support the renewal of these contracts for one reason. It does what it sets out to do. It lowers the number of cars that park in our system. Few other quick thoughts. One, there are really only two approaches to fixing the problem of a parking deficit. It's either we have fewer cars park in the spaces, or we build more spaces. We're authorizing up to $120,000 to be spent out of the parking utility, and that's a serious amount of money, but it's nothing compared to the millions of dollars that we would have to spend to build a new parking deck. And third, we must approve this contract. And third, we must approve this contract extension. And we can, once we approve the contract extension, we can make changes to the program, which we are going to do with the next resolution, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So I'm going to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen.
All right, thank you. So Councilman Miniger and I have had a lot of conversations. So I just want to thank you so much for going through all the data. You've taken a ton of time understanding the need and how this fulfills the need. I'm wondering, through you, Council President, if maybe, I mean, you can answer the questions, or maybe Director McNanny can answer the questions. I'm, I like the idea. I think this program has filled a gap. What I'm curious about is, in 2019, the program had jumped to $175,000. So I'm concerned that this is one of those types of programs that as, obviously, there's a need, but I'm struggling with the city to subsidize something that if you're going to the train station and you feel like you might not get a space, my feeling is, as a person, you can decide to take an Uber because you don't want to deal with parking, and that can be taken on as an individual. That's my feeling. So, but I'm not totally adverse to this. So what I'm curious about is, when we say that we have 87% full, 90%, 95%, I'm curious if we can just, I can understand the numbers. Like, what number of spaces are empty? So what's that? I don't know if it's, I don't even know if November, October, I'm sorry, November and December are still at 87, 90, and 95? Have they increased?
Council President, through you.
Yes.
So just a quick reminder.
Yeah.
Spring break, this is consistent in 2019 and also what I've seen in the other years, in between 2019 and now, which is really the beginning or middle of '21 because 2020 was almost nothing. Spring break, summer, which is July and August combined, and then December, so I just said holiday season. They do have a slight dip. Just keep that in mind. I also want to mention, this is a, this is tricky because I, there's a resolution right after this that would, and I, this is a, this is a, I guess, a gentle reminder for questions from people in the council chambers. The finances of this will be addressed in a much more detail in the next resolution, if that, if that matters. I mean, we can talk about, we can get the answers to your questions, but the finances will be talked about, definitely, much more detail in just a few minutes.
I think the issue is that we do have some flexibility. Through a resolution, at any time, we can change the pricing structure to drive behavior the way we want to drive behavior. So if, you know, if for some reason, demand for the parking spaces goes down, we can, you know, make the price of Uber and Lyft more expensive. And if we find ourselves with, you know, with really a lot of demand for parking, and we want more people to take Uber and Lyft, we can do that as well. We can also adjust the pricing by capping the maximum cost to encourage people to share rides. There are a lot of different things, or to compare the prices of Uber and Lyft. So there are a lot of things that we can do, and we're going, you know, and Councilmember Miniger will talk about that in the next resolution. So we are looking very carefully at how to manage this program. But taking this program away now because we're at 89% and not at 100% doesn't make sense with the trends we're seeing because if we don't have this program, we're going to have to go through a whole RFP process. We'll have to build the program again from scratch. We have users now who are using it, who, if the price gets too high, might decide, okay, maybe I'll take a break. But it's, it's an existing program. So I think to get rid of this now, as we're seeing our parking numbers going up, is a really bad management idea. I think, you know, the way we manage is through the pricing structure. And if that makes sense.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, through you, Council President. And I realize I derailed your original question, which was the number of spaces that corresponds to these 87 or 90%. I may have to rely on Director McNanny, but I'm looking at the chart right now. We have, so in Broad Street Garage, 2022, for the 87%, that was October, number, average number of available spaces was 46. So the Broad Street Garage has 491, it was 46.
Okay. So I guess what I'm struggling with is, if there is capacity, if the goal of the program is to, and let me just read this. I just, I just want to, I'm so sorry. I just want to say this. Is if the goal is that we don't have enough spaces for cars, but we have spaces that don't have cars in them, I don't feel like we really met that need. And I think what you and I talked about, and I didn't mean to cut you off, Council President, I just want to finish my thought. Here's my question. Are we making enough money for out-of-town commuters that outweighs the $120,000 that we are setting aside? Because likely, if this does go to 120,000, because if we are truly talking that these trends are headed in this way, we could hit the 120. I'm going to just pretend we do because I think it would, then why, then just do 80 if we don't think we're going to hit 120. And so I want to understand if the commuter out, the, the, sorry, it's been a long day. The.
Non-resident commuter.
Thank you. Non-resident commuter, if we're making enough money to, go ahead. Yeah.
Through you, Council President. In 2019, when we were at our peak for parking and also the ride share program, and with the non-resident parking with valet service, we were taking in $450,000 for the non-resident commuter parking. And that paid for this ride share program, plus other amenities that Parking Services offers. Now, when we looked at this, and one of the reasons why we kept it, looking at it, kept it low, we went from $2 a ride, and in May of 2022, we went to $3 a ride because we saw an increase in the cost and increase in ridership or participation. But currently, with the non-resident parking for this year, we're about $250,000. So well covers, but I still want to state, the $120,000 that everyone keeps mentioning is a budget number. We put it in not knowing how many riders we would have and how many would take Lyft and/or Uber. So as a conservative budget number, I put in 120. And this year, we're only going to be spending $66,000 on the actual ride share program. The non-resident income is about $250,000. So it well covers what we're spending this year. Now, the contract is that way because we didn't know. We had to put a number to it. It was a conservative number compared to 2019. But what we're looking at, the contract is written for 120,000. We're just renewing it. But in our budget discussions, we will have those discussions with the Finance Committee based upon the history of 2022, what we're likely going to spend for 2023. And I will tell you right now, with what I'm projecting, it's not going to be anywhere near 120 for 2023 for the full ridership cost. So that's why everyone's getting stuck on the 120 number, 120,000 number. And it's not, we just had to pick a number to get this new RFP into place. And with coming out of COVID, we had no idea what we were dealing with. We look at this monthly, we look at the ridership, we look at how many individual people are taking the rides. And in October, there's 146 individual Summit residents that are taking the rides. And what we're looking at, though, is the cost of gasoline. There are parameters that increase the cost of the actual Lyft or Uber program. So what the council decided, with me giving them this information on a monthly basis, saying that $2, because it is a premier service, at $2 a ride is too low. So we went up to 3. And now this next resolution, there'll be further discussion on some more cost-cutting parameters that we can, to keep the cost down for the utility. And then it would, I think it would jump people to look at either Lyft or Uber. What's the most, if they have to pay a little bit more, it is a premier service. So if they're paying a little bit more, they may take the time to review the price. Right now, they're just, they're clicking on a ride. They're not looking at the price. We need them to look at the price. But it is a valuable service right now because our parking is increasing on a daily basis. Now also, I do want to remind you of something, and there are a lot of variables with parking. So I don't want to bore you with all the data, but it's very important. This is resident commuter parking, but a lot of the facilities that the resident commuters are parking in are also shared by downtown employees. So while my resident commuter numbers are going up, I have to be very cognizant of watching the employee and the non-resident numbers. I look at them every day, every week, every month. So that.
Thank you, Director McNanny. I had one question for you as well. If we find that, that the costs of our, of our Uber and Lyft program go up, we are also able to raise the non-resident commuter prices as well?
Absolutely, yes.
And I think there is some price elasticity there in terms of, you know, we're at $12 now, but, but there are people who would spend a lot more than that. And again, that's.
It's all for discussion within our budgets, yes.
Exactly. So if we find that we, rather than getting rid of the non-resident commuters, we could look at charging them more to subsidize this other program, correct?
I would say that it was a good financial decision to keep the non-resident riders because that helps support the entire utility.
Right.
For the city until we, we're starting to come out. And you'll see Finance Committee and then the public with the budget discussions. We'll see how we're doing compared to the last two years. And we are climbing, so, which is great. So we're trying to cover all our expenses, which we do.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah.
So, just to summarize, I'll keep you sitting there. I'm not going to ask you a question specifically. I'm just going to make a point. There are spaces available, right, right now. There are spaces available. But what Andy is telling us is that the number of spaces available is getting smaller and smaller every day. So let's play it out, right? Let's say tonight, we don't renew the contract. We say, we're done with this. Find a parking spot, right? Like, find a parking spot, figure yourself out, get to the train station. Whether it's next week, next month, or next year, we will return to a time when parking spaces are not available. And where do people, driving around, looking for spaces in the town that they live, where do they come to lodge a complaint? That's here. That's us, right? And they'll say, where were you? What were you doing when you knew that these trends were going this way and you had this program in place and you didn't renew it? Why, why would we say, why would we not do that? So this, this is very important that we have to, we have to do this because we know what's going to happen. We know that parking, like, like it has been since cars have existed, parking has been a problem in Summit, right? So we know that someday soon, parking is going to become a problem in Summit again for commuters. And we are going to do all the other stuff, right? We're going to raise the, the, the charge for the individual people. It's already more, it's already more to, to take the Uber or Lyft program because it's a convenience. We're going to put a cap on the total amount of the ride. We're going to probably have to have a serious conversation about raising the non-resident commuter fee and probably have a serious conversation about raising the resident commuter fee. So, right? These are, these are all things that we have to do together. But renewing this contract is like, yeah, we got to renew the contract, and then we can talk about all the other stuff. So that's, that's mine. I'm going to stop talking about it. Thank you.
Did you have something else, Councilmember Allen? I mean, what I think, if I vote yes, it would be because we don't want to go back out and try and restart these contracts again next year.
Correct.
I'm still struggling with capacity. I think that there are empty parking spots that people can park. And I guess I'm arguing that you're right, it's a nice thing to have. But I don't necessarily believe the city should be funding individuals to get to town. It's just my personal opinion.
No, I understand that. But I would urge you to look at that spreadsheet that Director McNanny sent to us today, and I just gave you my copy of it because it shows that there are actually in, for commuters, there are a lot fewer, the Broad Street Garage, Tuesday through Thursday, is pretty much full. So, you know, yes, there are spots scattered around, and yes, the overall usage is not, is not 100%. But you don't want to be at 100%. You want to have turnover. And some of the places where there is space are things like the DeForest lots because no one wants to park in the DeForest lots for some reason that I can't quite figure out. And everyone wants to park in the street in front of where they're, where they're going to shop. But my point is, you can't look at it as an aggregate because the, you know, the DeForest lots are not a substitute for the commuter lots. So I think, you know, when you, I think that, that spreadsheet will really help. And, and maybe that's something we can share on, on the city's website at some point.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
I just want to remind you, I mean, when this first happened, when we first enacted this, it was wildly popular. And people couldn't believe we had such a creative idea. Why, you know, the news, television news stations came out here to talk to us about.
Won awards.
Yeah. I mean, I just think, yeah, we're not at 100% right now, but why would we wait till we get to 102?
Through you, Council President. I would like to share with Councilwoman Allen such a wildly different perspective. When I was interrogating Councilmember Miniger about you not thinking that this should subsidize riders, I was actually thinking of the opposite, that I wanted to make sure citizens who live in the furthest parts of town were not disadvantaged because they have to pay more. And I said, so please make sure and look at it. So I don't think we should spend time trying to change your mind that you don't think that that is, I appreciate your perspective on that. And we just have different, different points of view. And I, I actually understand now because I really, you ask why you don't want to park at the lot, that other lot, DeForest lot, because I'm trying to catch a train. And I don't have time to.
You shouldn't be parking in the DeForest lot to take the train.
Well, I'm just helping you think about the mindset of a commuter.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about.
But I'm just sharing, I'm just sharing the perspective that we all have different motivations that have us choose a service. And this is, in my opinion, a great benefit to the residents of Summit. And we are managing it in a very responsible way. And so I just wanted to share a whole different perspective, and so I appreciate yours.
I think, I think our city administrator has a comment.
So Councilwoman Allen, I appreciate your concern because that has been the one part of our discussion since day one is about subsidy, any subsidy, looking at this. But it, I think there's another way to think about it because we've, we had this discussion seven years ago. We looked at what, what the alternative was, right? So public parking is subsidized. It just is. If you allow all the parking spaces to become private, you're going to quickly realize how it's subsidized. So this was the one thing that we looked at this and said, in the alternative of building a parking structure, we are going to provide another option for our residents. When, it fluctuates. It's not going to be full every day, but then there are days, three days a week potentially, that we're over, over demand. So we looked at this as another option. And we realized we're going, we have other users, our non-resident, that come and park in our system and pay a lot more. But ultimately, the, this cost in our, our parking utility budget, we provide parking, we need to provide parking, and this was another option for people not to use, to have their car sit in a parking space all day. We need turnover, or we need another alternative. And so it was an alternative program for our residents, which still stands. Whether it, we, we, we went through this two years of the pandemic where there was just a complete stoppage. We're still trying to figure out how commuters are going to, you know, they're, how often they're going to go into the city or how they're going to use our system. But the alternative is building another parking structure or buying up land to provide more parking. And that's costly. And I'll just leave it, final remark. All public parking, to the extent that it is, is subsidized.
Thank you. I think that's a very good point.
Council President, can the, I just want to ask, Rita, can commuters park in the tier parking garage, or is that employee-only?
Through you, Council President. It is, the regulation is currently employee-only. However, there are residents that park in there, and I didn't, no one's going to get a ticket if they're resident parking in there. a ticket if they're resident parking in there. So again, that's where overflow capacity comes in. And that's what we look at. We look at, okay, we count if there's five to 10 residents parking in there. You know, we're not going to, when I have another two levels that are open, we're not going to even know, once everything's full, we have segregated areas, because the commuters come in first, then the stores open up, then the employees come in next. So we have to save spaces for them. So it goes hand in hand. There's different variables. But to answer your question, no. But we allow it currently, because of the COVID situation.
Okay. And how many parking spots will open up once the firehouse is done?
I'm being told anywhere from 40 to 50. And that's not until September of 2023. But I don't have the firm number of spaces as of yet.
And how will that impact this?
It's hard to say. I could know more next year. Because I'm anticipating the increase of more commuters, more, you know, our downtown's very vibrant. So the more stores that open up, the more restaurants, the more employees they hire, the more parking demand is on the city. So, you know, let's hope that even in the employee sections, that they go up. You know, that means we're even more vibrant than we currently are. So having a parking problem is not bad for Summit. We just have to manage it properly. And it takes a lot of moving parts, constant analysis.
And the other thing is, we do have the ability to go back to a valet system if we need to.
Yes.
So that, that gives us some extra capacity as well. And that's usually the non-residents that valet, correct?
Yes.
Right. So, I mean, there are a lot of different tools in the toolbox. So I think, and this is just one of them. But it's one that we do need to have happen, I think. So with that, are there members of the public that have comments on the rideshare program?
Hi, Eric Zlaski, 169 Broad Street. I will say, I very much enjoy numbers. 13 is my favorite number. I was trying to take in all the data that Mr. Miniger was putting out. I did my best with the Word document. So just want to say, in terms, I think Lisa makes some incredibly strong points, just in terms of the, the concept. Conceptually, a lot of things have changed over the course of the last five to seven years. Just looking at the overall economics, and agreed to the point that the, don't want to go through another RFP program. So there's validity to fact to renew the contract. But I would advocate for putting on pause, considering the, the economics and the utilization. If I think about just capacity, and again, I didn't have the benefit of the full numbers, but if I look at October run rates, it's not just the incremental cost, or the burden that the city is incurring, but also the potential of lost income by people not parking in the lots. And so if we just look at October of 2022, those same individuals who would have otherwise used the parking spaces, as opposed to the rideshare, it would have generated about 15,000 to 20,000 of income for the city. So that's just something to consider. If I think about the 40 spaces, and I promise I'm very good with numbers, so I see shaking of heads in the wrong direction. If I think about 40 spaces, $4 per space, that's $160 per day, over the course of 250 days, over the course of the year, that's $40,000 of potential income for the city. So I think in terms of, again, I would advocate for the renewal of the contract. But I think there's a lot of opportunity to revisit, whether it's the, the Monday-Friday concept, do you want to drive utilization into parking spots, I think, until we get to a point of capacity. The other thing that I'll talk out, I'll throw out there as well, I know this is referred to as a rideshare program, it's effectively become a car service. There are a lot of very cool technology-based solutions for true carpooling, which could be an opportunity for the Parking Committee to consider. If you have residents who are living next door, who are commuting at same points in time, that's another utility, not just for the benefit of alleviating parking needs, but also taking traffic off the road as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Council President?
Yes.
So I did, I did want to ask why the shaking of heads by Rita, to the, to Eric's point.
The loss of revenue question. Yes. Do you want to address that, please?
Sure. Through you, Council President. Again, I think it might not be, and it's difficult to sit here and go through all the numbers. But, you know, again, we are, we're still getting the $4, they're still paying the $4, as if they parked the car. There is a higher cost to the city, I understand that. But it's being subsidized by the non-resident hire fee. So again, we could stop the program, but I think we'd be in jeopardy of then having a real parking problem within six months. So, and also, the reason why I'm not shaking my head at the numbers, because you can't look at this just based upon a daily rate of someone parking. Because if they can't find parking in the resident employee lots, they'll take customer parking. They'll be in the DeForest lots, they've been in the DeForest lots. We ticket them in the DeForest lots every day on Springfield Avenue, Union Place. They're taking up valuable turnover spaces by parking their car all day long. To me, that's a higher value that we're losing than offering this rideshare program. So it's a bigger conceptual, you know, but that's what I look at, is that, you know, numbers are numbers. But what is the high cost of having people park on Springfield Avenue, Union Place, or the DeForest lots? And how much turnover are we not getting? And how much the stores are suffering, and the restaurants are suffering? That's what this whole program, management of this whole parking program is really for, is to support our downtown.
Through you, Council President, may I ask Rita a question?
Sure.
Do you have a cap on the non-resident permits you issue?
We don't issue permits, but we do have a cap on the number of vehicles. And again, we have, it's 125. We're finding that if they get here and they park, we are managing that on a daily basis, by ticketing them through enforcement. We've been doing that for a couple of months now. They aren't happy about it. I've heard from the municipal judge. But that's our only mechanism. Unless there's a decision, which has been talked about, that there is no non-resident parking, but then that takes away the subsidy money for not only the rideshare program, please, I want to stress that. You know, it's not only the rideshare program that it subsidizes. It helps pay for all our other services.
Thank you. Did you have, Ms. Hamlet, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to follow up through you, Council President, Councilwoman Harrison. Could you just, your first comment, when you talked about the revenue of this program, could you just repeat that? I couldn't understand it from back there.
So I was thinking of, and that's why I asked Rita about the non-resident fee. And I know that is a revenue generator for us. And, and so I, I like that this Uber, Lyft program keeps Summit a, an attraction for folks to come and use our, our train station. And it makes it easier for residents here. And the parking utility is a money maker for the city. So that is what I was speaking about.
Understood. So just to clarify, the parking is a revenue generating, with this included or without? I'm sorry. That was just my question, I guess.
Through you, with what is included?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
With what is included?
I just wanted to understand, it seemed as though you were considering this as a revenue. I just wasn't clear on
The rideshare program?
Right. That's exactly right. I wasn't sure exactly what you were trying to say.
No, I don't think that's the point.
No, not at all. No.
Okay. Well, I think that
I think the point is that by, by having the rideshare program, it allows us to have a parking utility that works, that allows people to get the parking they need, for the businesses to function, for the employees to be able to park, for residents to be able to park and get to work. It's, there are a lot of different tools to make this work, and this is one of them.
Understood.
Is that correct?
That's correct, Council President.
I think when you look at it, so we have 108 users, from what I understand, is that what you meant, 100-ish?
No, in October, there was 146 individual users of the program.
146. So I think when you just break that down by average number per resident, it's just high. For right now, for example, if you have a $20 ride, we're subsidized, it's a loser, right?
But we're not talking about that. The next resolution is to address the costs. So it's not going to be a $20 ride.
May I, Council President?
Yes.
You'll be very happy, what you just said, you'll be very happy with the next resolution. I'm, I will say the entire resolution to you, at your seat.
I know. I just have a hard time, because I truly, like, when I have to go to the train, I drop somebody off. So I have a hard time, it's a subsidy, let's be very honest, is what it is, when I have to take
But you know what? If you paid for parking, and you went out in the free market, if we, if we privatized our parking, it would not be $4 a day. It's that subsidized. Everything is subsidized. You know, if you, if, if, if this were like Manhattan, you'd be paying 15, 20 bucks for your parking. Well, if, not, but we're not in Manhattan. But I'm saying, like, you, you know, you get, you know, one of those companies to do it, it's going to be 15, 20 bucks. It's not $4.
Because they're for profit.
Yes.
And we are not.
Exactly. So we're providing a service to our residents.
And as Michael Rogers said, all public parking is subsidized, whether it's the rideshare, whether it's the Forest lot, whether it's the tier garage, no matter what. So we're all kidding ourselves if we think that the free market would, would allow for a $4 spot for the day.
Understood. I just have a hard time when we have homeless people in our Village Green, living under trees, and we're subsidizing parking. I have a hard time with it.
The two don't, the two don't even, they're not in the same pot. It doesn't, one doesn't have anything to do with the other. If we don't do this, what we're looking at is building a parking garage. So that's not, you know, and this is not money that's coming out of taking care of homeless people. It's too
Understood.
The parking utility is a self-funding entity.
Utility, yeah.
Yes, it's a utility. And it funds itself through user fees. So it's not, it's not that if we didn't do this, we'd have money to house homeless people.
Understood. I understand. I'm disagreeing with the fact that it is, they're separate, right? You pay to park, or you pay to rideshare. And it's two, it's two totally separate buckets. And I know Michael and I have talked about this, and
Paying for parking or rideshare is not separate buckets. They're the same
Let's be honest, we're not getting any money from ridesharing. Zero. $0, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. $0.
But it's a cost avoidance.
Yeah, that's correct.
At a 67% to 68% utilization rate, I'm not sure I agree. At 100%, then I
It's not 67% utilization. If you look at the numbers, it's, Broad Street has more, has higher, the commuter lots have higher utilization. 67 is system-wide. You don't want, you can't mix, you know, a parking spot, a 90-minute meter on Springfield with a Broad Street all-day spot. It's, the two are not fungible.
Understood. I'm just confused as why we're adding parklets, which we need parking.
That's six spots.
I get it. I get it. But we're taking, we took apart, we took away the garage for the firehouse, so we don't have parking. We're taking away, we're adding parklets. I'm not sure what the answer is. I don't know what the answer is. I'm just, this is just my question.
The answer is, it's not, nothing is simple, and everything is a balancing, and, you know, that's what it is. Okay. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Good evening, Mr. Friedland.
Hi, everybody. Andy Friedland, 74 Blackburn. I'm one of the passionate 140 people, I guess, taking the rideshare program. When I did hear about it, we were debating between five or six different towns, like I think a lot of people do, chat them, you know, the same dance that people find themselves in. And I heard about it, I'm like, that's so innovative. It's a really cool solution to a lack of parking. I still tell people about it, and they're always surprised, and like, really surprised that a town government got that through. It's a super cool solution. I think the scenario I would think about is a year from now, if we are at 100%, and you just buy a very expensive home with a ton of taxes, and there's no parking spot. So that scenario, I think, would be pretty brutal. I would be upset if I had to take, like, an expensive Uber to come into town. So it's a really nifty idea. I think we could look at creating an additional ad unit, maybe at the train station, have Uber or Lyft kind of pay for it to help bring down the cost. But I love the program. That's it.
Could you explain additional ad unit? What do you mean?
So in the, it doesn't have to be the train station, but I would just create some sort of additional billboard space, that's, you know, classy and small. And Uber, I had both Uber and Lyft as clients for 10 years at Amazon there. They spend a lot in marketing. That kind of unit would be very appealing to them. And you could probably get away with, I don't know, our prices for what we charge on the train station now, but something that would bring it down. I like the accountability. It's good that everybody's keeping an eye on the price, too, so that's smart. But I'm just a huge fan of the program, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Glad to be here.
Great.
All right. Any other comments from members of the public?
Council President, we have two.
Okay, thanks.
The first one from Rachel Simon on Elm Street. After reviewing the details of the dynamic ridesharing resolution, which is being introduced and voted on tonight's meeting, I'm hoping this council uses common sense and votes no on this program, which could cost up to $120,000 for the below reasons. Number one, the purpose of the program is to alleviate parking congestion in and around downtown by offering subsidized rides to the train station. Based on the data in the agenda packet, the lots are not full. They are approximately 67% or, and 56% utilization. So why is money being allocated to alleviate an issue that really doesn't exist? Number two, based on the data from the agenda packet, there are single occupancy rides exclusive of the driver, which does nothing to decrease cars on the road during high-traffic times of the day. If this is something council wants to pass, why is the program not limited to multi-passenger trips only, which is better for the environment, better for congestion, and costs the city less? Number three, the allocation of up to $120,000 for a subsidized car service to the train station seems a bit excessive, when council has repeatedly said we have a revenue and debt, we have revenue and debt issues. Hopefully, this council will take a closer look at the data and not rush into a potentially unnecessary allocation of the parking services operating budget for a program that is used by a tiny fraction of the community. The next one is from Kevin McGoey on Woodland Avenue. I've read through the package for tonight's meeting, and the rideshare item really jumped out at me. A lot about the city's revenue problem has been talked about over the last year. Spending $125,000 of those revenues on this program seems incredibly wasteful, especially considering that the commuter parking lots are currently operating at 67% capacity. It's a shame so much was spent over the past few years on this program, when the lots are, were even less utilized. It's mentioned in the package that this cost is being funded by the parking services revenues, and not by taxpayers. Statements like this are ridiculous. It's all taxpayers' money. Any wasted or lost revenue has been, has to be made up by taxpayers, either through service cuts or increased taxes. Everyone should already understand this. More information needs to be understood before committing the city to this project for another year. Maybe the city needs to raise the price of all-day parking in the garages, and/or eliminate some of the out-of-town parking to make more room for its own residents, if enough doesn't exist. Lastly, I saw where one individual in the program received the Summit subsidy on a Lyft ride in another state. It was a surprise to the person, but makes me feel like the program could be easily abused. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. So through you, they took a look at the, the ride that was out of the area, and it was identified by Lyft as a glitch that was used twice in the last month, and never before that. Like, it was never used before that. Director McNanny is able to review the GPS coordinates of every single ride, and we haven't even gotten the bill for the one that we, that we're talking about, the one out of, out of this area. But the good thing is, we're not going to get a bill, because Lyft is, anything that happens outside of the area that we've set, they're not going to charge us for. So it's not a, it's not a vulnerability to hacking or to being abused. It is a one-time glitch that, now that we've pointed it out, they're actually going to be fixing it. So use it fast, folks.
Not that anyone's advocating.
No, I mean, if you know what that was.
But, yeah. Okay, so if there aren't Council President, I know, I don't mean to do this ad nauseam, but this is, to me, this is important. Councilman Miniger, it's not Saturday and Sunday, right? It's only Monday through Friday?
Correct. Saturday, Sunday's not included.
Okay. And we're going to talk about the increase in price. And I really want to say thank you for coming tonight. Because I have to be really honest, I haven't heard from anyone who's ever, I mean, Councilwoman Harrison, you've used it, but I really haven't heard anyone use it. So I also think that when I'm looking at next year, I mean, I feel like you kind of got me on the RFP part, that I don't want you to have to start over. But I'm going to say, like, I, I'm going to really be looking for data. Who's using it? Why are they using it? Are they happy? I think we should be looking at new opportunities for creating better technology. I don't think this is, this was the right program in 2016. I don't think this is the right program for 2022. But I'm going to take your professional advice, because that's what we are asking for.
because that's what we are asking for, and I trust you, and I trust that you're making the right decision for the city, because I know that you really do want revenue for the city. So this is a really hard decision for me, because I really, I'm not 100% on it. I'm probably not even 30% on it, because I think we have capacity. But I appreciate people showing up tonight and sharing their concerns and their comments, and so I just want to say that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Real quick.
Yep.
The idea of finding out, asking people about it, is a great one, and we've talked about it before, I think, you and I have. The ability to survey resident commuters or people who have permits, we should absolutely utilize that.
So, yes, Council President, we did a lot of that in the beginning, and I think certainly the last couple of years, with everything else going on, we kind of did not really solicit, because it wasn't being used. And I think, I think it's definitely time to reengage the users and get more feedback. I think it's just been, it's been a while, and I think it's time to kind of reconnect with the users. And even people, we used to go, we used to actually survey people who weren't using it a lot, and then we would determine, well, they're not using it, because there was a waitlist. We limit the number of people, so that was the other control we had, is we limit the number of participants, so that it wasn't just an unlimited number amount. So that's why there's, it's, I mean, if you're going to compare to the population, it's always, it was created with the 100, then we went to 200, then we went to 250, and then we went to 300. So it's just, was by design.
And during the pandemic, we were, it was very minimal usage in 2020, for example, correct? There's a few thousand dollars, is my recollection. Yeah, so. Okay, so are there, so I think we've covered this one. Are there any, all right, so we're ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to the second community programs and parking services. Councilmember Miniker.
Thank you, Council President. I'm finding my space here. This is number 10057, and I would like to make a correction to this resolution. After discussion in committee, the recommendation of the Director of Parking Services and the need to provide some more clarity, I'd like to correct line number two in the middle of this resolution to state, and this is in quotes, "That the city's total cost per ride shall be a maximum of $8. In parentheses, a $12 total ride cap minus a $4 rider fee." The reason for changing the total ride cap from 15 to 12 is the recommendation by Director of Parking Services, as well as to bring the average cost to the city per ride closer to the prior year's over, average cost. This resolution authorizes an increase in the rideshare rider fee from $3 to $4 per trip and a decrease in the total trip cap from $20 to 12, bringing the city's maximum possible cost per ride to $8. A moment ago, we reviewed, not a moment ago, a while ago, we reviewed the current parking situation and the importance of the rideshare program during times of limited parking availability. As we steadily move back to where we were in 2019, we have an opportunity to adjust this rideshare program. Very flexible rideshare program adjustments because of resolutions, not requiring an ordinance. We can reduce, we can adjust this in two ways, and we're going to do so. Increasing the fee to $4, which is the minimum amount the rider will pay per ride, and capping the total ride cost to 12, meaning the rider will pay that $4 fee plus any amount beyond the $12 cap. These two changes are anticipated to save the parking utility over $8,100 if next year's rideshare usage matches what we saw this year. In addition, the price cap will incentivize the rider to find the lowest price between Uber and Lyft. Knowing a ride below $12 total will result in savings for the rider. The rider will be more likely to find the cheapest deal. I move to adopt this resolution with that correction.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council?
Good, thank you, Council President. Could we consider $5? Going up to 5 instead of 4?
We, we toyed, through you, Council President, we discussed this a ton. We thought that 5 was too high. It was incremental. We've done it incrementally from 2 to 3. The fee itself, I think, is very important to be incremental. The cap, because of what it does, it's not, it limits large, large cost of rides. That can be done in a more, you know, like a large swath kind of way. But also, I know you're asking to do that right now. This is so flexible. It can be done by resolution. No kidding? We could do this at every council meeting, but we're not going to. It could be done very easily in the future. It could be done very easily in the future if we find that ridership is either, you know, squashed by these things or otherwise.
Through you, Council President.
Yes.
Cost has doubled this year now, right? We went from 2 in March of 2022 to now we're going to 4 right now. So I think let's be reasonable, right? We can take one step at a time, and we can always increase the price. We can always lower the price. It's a resolution. We can do it on a whim.
Yeah, I would defer to, the Parking Services Committee has spent a lot of time discussing this, so I would defer to their decisions and their, you know, the memo shows, you know, the different analyses. And I just think, I wouldn't advocate now, you know, making that change. That's my opinion. The other thing is, I think the cap is a valuable tool to encourage people not only to shop around for the better price, but also maybe to consider carpooling, particularly, I know people don't like to carpool in the morning because they don't want to be dependent on someone else, you know, someone else's schedule. But I suspect that there's going to be more carpooling on the way home if you're at the train station and, you know, when you're ready to take an Uber and there's another person there going your direction, and that saves you the overage. I think we're going to be getting a lot more people pairing up or going in groups to save some money. I'm sorry?
That happens now, through you, Council President.
That happens now? But I think with the cap, it's going to happen even more. So I think that's actually a benefit in terms of, you know, and it's a better, that's a better solution, I think, than the driving and picking up your, you know, your spouse or your kid or whoever from the train station. It's kind of, it saves even more trips by doing that, if you can get more people into the car. I just don't think that a, you know, saying, well, you know, if there's not parking, why don't you drive your spouse or your child to the train? That's not an option that everyone has. So I think, you know, I think we have to be mindful of all the different needs of different people in this community. So that's my, those are my thoughts on this. Any other comments from members of council?
I guess the only one bit information I'd be curious, do we normally hit the $12? I know you, thank you for lowering this down to $12, by the way, from 15, but how often would we hit that threshold? Do you know?
Through you, Council President, the average price for this year's rides was $10.15 to the city, which means that it was $13.17, 15 cents. So it's going to be lower. This is lower. This is taking the average, and it will move it lower.
So on average, the city will probably only pay the $4, because really, you're not, most likely, you're not going to hit that $12 cap wherever you're at in the city, unless you're on the perimeters. Or you will, you will hit it.
It's, it's not guaranteed. It's going to be $8 every ride to the city.
Yeah.
Greg, you were starting to say, okay.
Well, I mean, if you're coming from Dale Drive to downtown, is that going to be $12? Is that $8?
Council President, it really all depends upon the demand for cars. That's what it's driven by. It's what's available. It's the demand and the supply, and that's what drives those prices, not where the distance, where you're going in the city.
And also the cost of fuel has driven the price up.
That's a big, and labor and subsidies that they may or may not be providing for drivers. Like, all these factors as to why you've seen the pricing, the average pricing per ride, go up. And that's understandable, but I think it goes to this constant evaluation of the program and what we're willing to take on, and that's where we are. And I think it's a great discussion, and I'm pleased that the council is entertaining it, and we will have to continue to evaluate it and to see whether we're actually, if we're really retiring people from using the program, and now they go into, you know, now they're parking their car in the system, and now there's more, you know, there's less supply. I mean, those are the things we're going to have to continue to monitor.
All right. Any other comments from members of council? Comments from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're on to safety and health. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed in closed session, Resolution number 10055 is to appoint Ian Rivera to the position of police officer within the Summit Police Department effective January 3, 2023. Along with the rest of the Safety Committee, I interviewed him and was very impressed with his extensive experience in the military and beyond, and I'm confident he will be a wonderful addition to our police department. I move to adopt this resolution.
And I second it. Thank you. So any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have one law and labor matter. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. Introducing Resolution ID number 10045 to authorize the 2,023 legal services in excess of $17,500 to point our city solicitor and our label council services. And this is to not exceed $250,000. This resolution is appointing Matthew Jacoby of Cleary Jacoby Alfieri Jacobs as our city solicitor and as the city's Labor Council through December 31, 2023. And this council has served this city council well, and I recommend this resolution for approval.
And I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? You know, thank you for your services.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
All right, and now we're on to the consent agenda. Usually, we take that as a whole, unless anyone has anything they'd like to pull out. Councilmember Miniker.
Sure. So I guess on behalf of Councilmember Levine, I was told that there is a possibility that Friday's date for the miracle on Elm Street could result in a rainout. And in that case, this would be postponed again to February 11, and it would become a Valentine's Day event. So that's on behalf of Councilmember Levine.
Right, so stay tuned. Keep an eye on the city's website. Okay, so with that, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to councilmembers' comments and new business. Does, first of all, I have one from Councilmember Levine about safety update. So Councilmember Levine has asked me to mention that car theft deterrent measures, about car theft deterrent measures. The Safety Committee continues to work on language for an ordinance to fine individuals for attempting to steal a car. We are working through language and considering which aspects to include. We also heard more about the enhanced geofence as presented by our Chief of Police at the recent Capitol Budget Workshop. This has deepened my resolve that this technology is right for Summit. Are there any other comments on new business? Okay.
Council President, yes. Thank you, Council President. As tonight is my last meeting, sitting up here, I want to thank the people of Summit for the privilege of serving this community. I want to thank my colleagues on council. I deeply respect what each of you brings to this job day in and day out. And I want to thank those councilmembers that I served with that are not here tonight, and they are Beth Little, David Naidoo, and Steve Bowman. It's been an honor to serve with all of you. I want to especially thank our mayor and council president. From just about the beginning of my term, the COVID pandemic was upon us. The compassionate and strategic leadership from both of you is beyond words. We are all grateful for what you were able to accomplish during those difficult days. Over the last few years, I've been asked quite often about what being on council is like. My response is consistent. We have the best people working at City Hall. We live in an extremely well-run city, and it is no accident. In my committee work, I've seen it up close, as I've directly worked with Mark Ozerowski, Rita McNanny, who just left, Rosemary Lictis, Tammy Baldwin, Aaron Schreger, and of course, Michael Rogers. These people and their teams are second to none. Summit is in good hands. And although I've never served on the Safety Committee, my firefighter brother and my police sergeant brother would not forgive me if I didn't give a shout-out to Chief Evers and Chief Segorsky, and of course, Captain Peters, who's here in his stead. The word that comes to mind when I think of you and your respective departments is professionalism. Finally, and most importantly, I want to thank my wife and kids. I could not have served these last three years without their love, support, and their sacrifice as well. So thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Sullivan. I'm going to let the rest of the council say a few words. I'm going to hold mine for the presentation at the REORG meeting when you get your going-away map, so. But I'll take volunteers. Councilmember Miniker.
Go first, thank you. So Danny, Councilman, it has been an honor working next to you here on the dais. I appreciate the guidance and insight you have generously provided during my first year on council. Your work in the past three years not only resulted in highly visible improvements in Summit, but in many ways, it set the stage for accomplishments that are still to come even after this year. And your work with the county in the last year or two is a model for how to go above and beyond as a member of council. You sent us an email back in November after the election, and you made an observation, very poignant and important observation, on the fleeting nature of our roles that we all fill, not just here on council, but just in life in general. I hope you recognize that while in this temporary role, you made a really tangible difference in the city that you live in, your own city. You affected positive change that will continue to benefit people who live here now and those who will live here someday. That is a success that you should carry proudly into whatever role comes next for you. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Hairston.
Through you, Council President. Council O'Sullivan, my left-handed colleague. It has truly been a privilege to sit next to you and serve with you. These past two years, I think, I've been with you, and to get to know you, and I haven't had the privilege of serving on a committee with you. But I want to share a special note of gratitude for your calls to make sure, and to receive my calls when I needed further explanation. Your depth of knowledge about community programs and the economic development initiative that you started was amazing. And I just want to thank you for your service, and I am just grateful for the opportunity to guide you better.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll just go down the row, I guess.
Danny, it's been a delight and a pleasure to work with you. I am sorry I didn't get to sit on a committee with you, because. Well, that's true. We did. We did. I think your detailed approach to every problem is something that we all should aspire to. And your graciousness, your good humor has meant so much. It's not easy to be up here and answer questions and be under the gun sometimes. You're always a gentleman and one who's prepared and intellectual, and I really appreciate that. And I've really loved working with you, and don't be a stranger.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. When Danny was a brand-new councilmember, we had our first committee meeting together in a room upstairs. On the way inside, Danny hit his head on the electronic locking system that hangs down a little bit from the rest of the door frame. It was his first time in the room, and Danny is tall. And yes, he played some organized ball, and yes, I'm sure he'll tell you the weather is very nice up there. But Danny got cut pretty good, pretty good. So when I say Danny put his blood, sweat, and tears into serving Summit, I mean that literally. literally. And it sort of set the tone for his service on council. He listened well, lifted the voices of staff and volunteers, and thought of himself last. Indeed, Danny is passionate, humble, and a selfless public servant who has made the most of his time here on council. Even through the pandemic, when it was easy to get tunnel vision and focus just on that, Danny knew how badly the community pool needed to be renovated and saw it through. Danny led the charge to upgrade basketball and tennis courts, to expand composting options, and to remove the gates from the DeForest Avenue parking lots. Danny also supported and led the efforts to host our very first pride events in Summit and broad expansion of cultural diversity in our community program celebrations on the Village Green. Some of these initiatives saved us money, some improved the experience for young athletes, and some made our city more welcoming. But all of them improved the city of Summit. So I hope you will join me in thanking this remarkable volunteer.
Thank you, Greg.
So Danny, you and I run in, we have a lot of common friends, but we don't run in the same circle. And I always heard about this guy, Danny, who's really tall that walks around town, and I was like, how do I not know him? Because my son was in middle school, he knew who you were, my friends knew who you were. And I'm going to tell you, it's been a real pleasure getting to know you, getting to learn who you are, being on admin. I've liked your perspective. You've been kind and gentlemanly and statesman. In those meetings, you bring great perspective, and you're honest. This is a really, being on council is an interesting thing because it's a political space to get here, right? And it's a competition, and you're a competitor, and you know there's always a winner, and there's a person that walks away. And I know that when you walk away, you're going to find another way to contribute. I want to thank you for being kind to me, thank you for being up here, and no matter what we disagree on or what we agree on, because usually, most of us agree more on what we disagree on, I want to say that it's been a pleasure getting to know you as a person, as a human, and working with you so that, and to know that you've made the community a better place. That's what we're all here for. So I really wish you the best. I know I'm going to run into you. I see you walking around town, I always honk at you.
Yeah.
So thank you for being you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have also, Councilmember Levine texted me, just a short thing, but she, so what she said is, Danny, it's been a pleasure, she should be sleeping instead of doing this. Danny, it's been a pleasure serving with you on CAPS. You've taught me tons about this complex subject matter and about the often hidden values of infrastructure. Thank you for all that you have done. I look forward to continuing to see you around town. And I think our city administrator would like to say something.
I'll finish up. Thank you, Council President.
Sure.
Councilman, thank you for the kind words, and I'll speak on behalf of the rest of the staff here and the departments that have worked with you. We very much appreciate that, the sentiments. Two things just dawned on me as you're now departing. One is, I'll be the only one left that was born and raised in Hudson County up here at the dais. And the second thing I'm really excited about is I'm going to regain my height stature and the council picture. And so I'm kind of happy about that. But it's been a pleasure to serve with you, and thank you, Danny. I wish you well.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I believe we are ready to adjourn. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?